Welcome everyone to the first Montgomery County Monkeypox Town Hall. My name is Dr. Amina Johnson. I am the LGBTQ liaison in Montgomery County. And I would like to welcome you all tonight. Tonight's session will focus on the LGBTQ community. Currently at this time, the LGBTQ community is disproportionately affected by monkeypox. But there will be more town halls about monkeypox and other communities to come. I want to recognize some guests that we have in the audience tonight. We have Gabe Albernaz, who is the Montgomery County Council President. We have Sarah Lev from Congressman Raskin's office. We have Karen Hendricks from Senator Van Hollen's office as well. Welcome and thank you all for joining us. Just also want to give you all a heads up that we conducted this summer the first Montgomery County LGBTQ community survey. A report about that survey will be coming in the fall of 2022, so please look out for that. And I'd like to introduce the Vice President of the County Council, Evan Glass, who will be giving his remarks.
Well, thank you very much, Amina. You've introduced a number of us, a number of my colleagues and other notable folks who are with us today, but I also want to share with everybody that it is notable that you are with us because you are actually the first LGBTQ liaison that we've had here in Montgomery County. And this discussion is exactly why it is important having you in county government and having you here. So I, I thank you and appreciate you, Amina. And I also want to say good evening and express my appreciation to all of you who are joining us tonight, especially those within the HHS department and their officials and other leaders throughout county and state and federal government who are participating in tonight's conversation, recognizing this is an all hands on deck situation. And we are coordinating across all levels of government, which is why it's critically important for us to have this conversation, to have an opened and honest conversation about the strategies to maintain the health and safety of all Montgomery County residents. And specifically, we're here to address the county's role in providing information, vaccinations and treatment for monkeypox. I've been getting emails, texts, DMs from residents, especially members of the LGBTQ plus community who are extremely concerned about the situation. And they're looking for answers to questions, questions like, how do I protect myself? How is Montgomery County going to provide help? And as a gay man myself, I understand those concerns. In addition to preventing the spread of monkeypox, we are working to prevent the stigma that is also associated with it. We know that monkeypox can affect people of any age, any sexual orientation and any gender identity. And while that is true, it is also true that as of this point in time, 99% of all reported cases of monkeypox are in men. And 94% of those infected have reported recent same-sex intimate contact. That is the reality that we're dealing with. But we also have to look upon lessons learned from other public health crises, most recently COVID. And during that pandemic, we understood the importance of providing information and resources to everyone. And similar to COVID and epidemics before it, people are nervous. They're anxious and they're scared. And this disease is not a minor one. The lesions it causes are often excruciatingly painful. It might require lengthy hospitalizations and can take weeks to heal. Currently, the LGBTQ plus community is experiencing the brunt of this outbreak. But anyone can be at risk for monkeypox, given how it's spread. And let me repeat that again, anyone can get MPX. And as a member of the council, I sit on the Health and Human Services Committee. And from that position, I've worked to ensure that Montgomery County residents have the vaccinations and resources to say, stay healthy and safe during COVID. And part of the reason we were able to do that is because we pushed for the governor to open major vaccination sites in Montgomery County. And I share that because now with MPX, I'm going to continue pushing so that we get the vaccinations we need. And I know that so many of you are seeing what's happening in the District of Columbia just across Western and Eastern avenues. And you are frustrated because we are not doing the same here. And there are a few reasons for that. But the main reason is that the district is treated like a state. And they get their own supply of doses to provide to a much smaller population. And here in Montgomery County, we are reliant on the governor and the State Department of Health to provide us with the vaccines that we need. And let me take this opportunity to say, Governor Hogan, we need more monkeypox vaccinations. Residents are anxious and frustrated, and we need you to do the right thing and provide us with more doses. As the first LGBTQ plus member of the council, this is not only about public health, but this is personal for me. It's one of the reasons why last year I passed the Montgomery County LGBTQ Bill of Rights, which explicitly bans LGBTQ plus discrimination in healthcare facilities, nursing homes and personal care facilities, because we know that healthcare is a basic right and everyone deserves medical assistance free from discrimination. But ultimately, this is an evolving public health issue. And our goal tonight is so that you will come away from this discussion with a better understanding of how you can protect yourself, how you can protect your loved ones, how vaccine eligibility works and what we all need to do moving forward as a community. And we live in a beautiful community and it's discussions like this that make me honored to be your council member and honored to do this work for all of you. And now I would like to introduce Dr. Raymond Kroll, who is the Director of the Department of Health and Human Services, who has been working overtime over the last four years to keep our community safe and healthy. And now Dr. Kroll will provide you with an update on what the Department of Health and Human Services is doing and will continue to do. Dr. Kroll?
Thank you, Vice President Glass. And I am, and good evening and welcome to everyone. Thank you all for taking the time to come out and share your thoughts with us and to learn something about where we are in the county and addressing this issue of monkeypox and containing its spread and keeping us all safe in the county. I am the Director of the Department of Health and Human Services. And on behalf of the county executive and the leadership of Montgomery County Government, I want to welcome you to this town hall. I greatly appreciate the partnership that we have had with Council Vice President Glass in organizing this event. And I know that not only Councilmember Glass, but all of the members of the county council, as well as our Maryland state representatives and our federal representatives are fully engaged in doing all we can to protect our residents and doing more than we have to this point and trying to get the resources in place to keep us safe and protected. We know there's a lot of concern in the community about this reemerging disease that was first identified in May of this year in the United States. And while there are a lot of questions, I want to assure you that the staff of Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services is working in partnership with LGBTQ plus organizations in the community. And we are together doing everything we can to respond to this. There clearly have been some hiccups along the way, especially, especially with the speed at which this vaccine has been rolled out. And we are continuing to work with our healthcare partners at the state and federal and regional partners to respond to this and to continue speaking loud and clear about the resources we need. Council Vice President Glass has already put out a call to Governor Hogan to get us the vaccines that we need. The state and the federal government are working to try to change the way, how the vaccines are distributed and how they can be administered to give us greater capacity to get vaccinations done in Montgomery County. This is the first of what we expect will be a series of town hall meetings. And we will continue to host them and to share information with you as long as there's any risk to our residents. I'm, I think our tonight will share with you the risks, who can get monkeypox, how it's spread, how you can protect yourselves and keep yourself safe, and how and when you can expect to be able to be vaccinated in the county. There are some differences. There are some differences that Councilmember Glass alluded to between DC and the state of Maryland. That should not be a reason for us not to get the vaccines that we need. We will put them in place as quickly as we can. We are working both to make sure that we are preventing the spread by identifying communities where the virus is attacking us and making sure that they are prioritized. Those communities are prioritized first in terms of eligibility for vaccines. I am also mindful of the history associated with, and the stigma associated with diseases that sometimes spread in the LGBTQ plus community. I lived through with family members and friends, the HIV pandemic or epidemic and saw firsthand the ways in which the community was mistreated. I want to assure you that is, that is the last thing on anybody's mind is allowing that to happen. We will not tolerate stigma or discrimination or bias in this process. And we will work to do as we did with rolling out the COVID vaccines to make sure that they are equitably distributed and available and that they are available to people who are at greatest risk. So with that, I'm going to stop and turn it back over to, I think to Ms. Dr. Johnson, who will take us further into the evening. I look forward to having a conversation and discussion with you all.
Thank you so much, Dr. Kroll. Our next speaker will be Dr. Bridges.
So good afternoon all, and thank you, Dr. Johnson, Vice President, Council Vice President Glass and Dr. Kroll. It's a pleasure to have this discussion this afternoon on monkeypox or MPX. This evening, we will use monkeypox and MPX interchangeably. There are other acronyms like communicable disease and epidemiology, CDNE. We will use, but they will be recurring themes that you will hear all the speakers share tonight. We want to impart and share as much information as we can this evening. Our public health response began as early in May, once the first cases of MPX were identified in the United States. In May, the cases were reported in the UK. And then on May 18th, we had cases reported in Massachusetts. And so our team began to put together a plan with increased transmissions growing in the US and internationally. Our Department of Health Human Services Public Health Service Team began to develop a response and timeline for vaccine strategy back in May. And I want to just share with you some of the timeline and how we continue to evolve and evaluate our vaccine plan, similar to some of the strategies that we deployed during COVID, using access framework, to access frameworks to make sure that we know demand is a challenge, but we want to equitably administer vaccines as soon as we get them in. We want to get those doses in the community. So the implementation of our MPX response plans continue to evolve based on federal and state guidance, including vaccine and test kits that become available to county health officials. On May 19th, we began working with our state and regional partners to understand clinical guidance and how access to vaccines would be administered again equitably. In May and June, our clinical and program teams participated in many, many ongoing federal and state level discussions with the CDC, with Johns Hopkins, with the Maryland Department of Health regarding case analysis and contact tracing. In mid-July, we issued a public health advisory and our communicable disease and epidemiology, CDNE team and our sexual health team created an initial screening tool for at-risk communities defined by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the Maryland Department of Health and case investigations. Our clinical teams, Dr. Rosen and Ms. Townsend will share some of those strategies that we either developed or those best practices that our research and evaluation team continues to explore. On July 20th, we issued a press release regarding challenges or the challenges associated with a limited number of MPX vaccine and doses. So let's think about those doses and, you know, Council Vice President Glass talked about the District of Columbia being a state entity. Well, our first allotment of MPX vaccine was 50 doses solely for post-exposure prophylaxis of close contacts or those known exposures in the county throughout healthcare providers who didn't have vaccines available yet. Then we received another 200 doses specifically identified for larger counties, Baltimore City, Prince George's and Montgomery County. And then we receive another dose, another tranche of 600 doses. Almost a week thereafter, we continue to advocate for more doses because we know based on our pre-selection, our pre-survey tool, we had over 2,000 respondents and we had about 850 doses to work with. Just last week, we recently asked for an additional 2,000 doses. Now, we haven't received confirmation of how many doses we will get, but we will continue and continue to plan for our vaccine strategy so that we can get those doses in the community. Our teams have created an MPX helpline in CDNE where citizens can call our disease control team at 240-777-1555 for information on vaccine eligibility, transmission rates and how to reduce risk for MPX exposure. And then we have another number, 240-777-2982 for assistance with completing our MPX vaccine pre-registration form. And thank you to all our residents who have completed the vaccine pre-registration form. And we have additional information regarding notification and a website that Ms. Townsend will talk about later during our town hall discussion. We continue to stay in touch with our federal delegation as Council Vice President Glass indicated. We even had a conversation with Congressman Raskin's office where we've explicitly asked for help and urged again for more vaccines. We need more vaccine. Demand is an issue and a challenge. And we want to be very frank and open about our request for demand and how we will use our vaccines in the community. We're also managing our surveillance and transmission and outbreaks. However, our public health team is developing a data dashboard. We've had requests for a data dashboard. The Maryland Department of Health is also developing, crafting a data dashboard based on surveillance data. But we want to look at our county level data, similarly as we did with COVID, as data are available to identify case demographics, the number of vaccines administered, current risk profiles and local positive case transmission data. So we hope to have that up and on our MPX website at the county's portal sometime next week. Now, we are trying to work on that and we have to test it to make sure that we can launch the information, that we have all the data feeds. So we're working on it simultaneously along with the Maryland Department of Health. We also plan to follow federal guidelines and deploy a dose-bearing vaccine strategy. I'm sure Dr. Rosen is going to share some of that with you this evening, within the next week to increase community access. We understand that there is a demand and we want to increase our community access. As Dr. Kroll and Council Vice President Glass indicated, anyone can get monkeypox. I'll just say that again, anyone can get monkeypox, which makes it a health concern for all. And we know it's been frustrating for the public and we want to recognize a need to have more community engagement, as Dr. Johnson indicated, in the form of a town hall or information sessions via other media platform. But I also want to urge everyone to also practice harm reduction strategies to help us reduce the spread of MPX in the community. Now, how can you do that, you may ask? Well, avoid coming into contact with people recently diagnosed with MPX or those who may have been infected. Avoid sharing bedding, toys and eating utensils, just to name a few. Wash your hands, which is a proven public health preventative measure. Wash your hands with soap and water or use hand sanitizers, hand sanitizer, especially after coming into contact with those who may have been infected or suspected infected. Limit close skin-to-skin contact for long periods as defined by the CDC. Now, what does that mean? According to the CDC, prolonged periods of close skin-to-skin contact includes three-plus consecutive hours of contact. Be mindful of festivals, events, concerts where attendance are fully closed and are likely to share skin-to-skin contact. These are safer activities. However, again, folks should be mindful of activities that involve kissing that might spread MPX. Avoid parties, clubs, saunas, back rooms, the spaces where there is anonymous contact, where there is minimal clothing and where there is direct, personal and often skin-to-skin contact at higher risk. And Ms. Johnson and our team will continue to share these harm reduction strategies, but these are just a few. Always practice hand hygiene. That's a recurring message, a repeated message. And lastly, use personal protective equipment when caring for patients with confirmed or suspected MPX infection. Wear a face mask if you are in close contact with someone who has symptoms. We continue to work closely with the Maryland Department of Health advocating again, which is one of our most recurrent and strongest messages to our decision makers. We advocate for our fair share of vaccines and partnering to get more vaccines in our community. It is as simple as that. There's always a public health challenge with what we cannot and can do to vaccinate more residents and suppress the spread of the virus. So this is what we currently cannot do. We cannot get as many doses as the Washington DC Department of Health, as Council Vice President Glass stated. DC receives their allotment based on state-level consideration and therefore they're able to get more vaccines. But we will continue to push for more vaccines in our community. We want nothing more than to vaccinate all who are at risk or who would like to get vaccinated for MPX, but currently cannot due to such a high demand. Our healthcare facilities or other healthcare facilities or federally qualified health centers may also have access to MPX. And we're working with them to make sure that they have the education, that they have the resources that we have access to, and that we continue to partner with information sharing and dissemination. But again, we cannot access federal pipelines to get more vaccines. Now, I talked about what we cannot do, but this is what we can do and what we have been doing. We can provide updated information regarding how important vaccines are as the most effective tool in preventing the spread of monkeypox. We can make it a habit of exchanging MPX vaccination and testing best practices with community partners, healthcare providers, affected individuals and county officials to ensure people who need care can access it and know how to protect their loved ones. We can continue to participate in discussions like this. And we will continue to participate in county-level discussions with various agencies, just to name a few. Our congregate living spaces, our correctional facilities, our homeless shelters, our nursing homes, our assisted living facilities, our Montgomery County Public School System, our early childcare learning centers and our Montgomery Care Safety Net clinics and hospital partners. And we will continue to have inter-jurisdictional conversations with DC and Virginia via the Metropolitan Washington Council on Governments to identify strategies to increase equitable access to vaccines. And you can help us craft targeted messages. We want you to be engaged as you've been engaged before, similarly to COVID. And help us provide increased awareness and knowledge in community, in our community, to reduce the chances of stigmatizing those who may have been in contact with the virus or marginalizing groups who may be assumed to be at increased risk for monkeypox. And we know that we cannot suppress the spread and mitigate further community-level transmission without you. Simply put, thank you for keeping us informed as our community pulse. Lastly, we'll continue to keep the lines of communication open with our liaisons like Dr. Johnson and partners with updates on the status of our vaccine supply and how they can be accessed. We will continue to raise awareness and we will continue to share up-to-date information about what or how people can protect themselves and others from the spread of MPX. And now I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Kimberly Townsend, our Senior Administrator for Communicable Disease. Thank you, and I look forward to our discussion this evening.
Good evening, everyone. As Dr. Bridges mentioned earlier, vaccination is an integral part of preventing the spread of MPX. So I'd like to talk a little bit about our vaccination efforts here at the Dennis Avenue Health Center within Public Health Services. As you know, we've received a limited number of MPX doses and we are expecting to expand the availability of vaccine in the coming weeks or months. We're working hard with the Maryland Department of Health to ensure that vaccine is available to high-risk exposures. Vaccination currently is available for individuals with confirmed and presumed exposure to someone with MPX. And they are offered by appointment at the Dennis Avenue Health Center location. Currently, vaccinations are limited to known contacts who are identified by public health via case investigation, contact tracing and risk exposure assessments. There's also a criteria for presumed contacts who may also be eligible. This includes those that have a known sexual partner in the past 14 days that was diagnosed with MPX, as well as those who have had multiple sexual partners in the past 14 days in an area with known MPX. These individuals are considered at highest risk to develop MPX for CDC and Maryland Department of Health guidelines. As additional vaccine is made available to us, we will be able to expand the vaccination to others who are at different levels of risk as well as for pre-exposure prevention. We've been providing vaccine using the Janos vaccine. It's a two-dose regimen given subcutaneously, which is the fatty tissue on the back of the upper arm, two, 28 days apart. We are launching and adopting the new federal and state administration guidance for the administration of Janos vaccine. It uses a smaller dose and has shown to have a similar effectiveness when given intradermally as the previous subcutaneous dose was, meaning it's still two doses, 28 days apart. Several jurisdictions are also moving towards this strategy. And most will be transitioning by the end of this month. So again, we are launching this new strategy or adopting this guidance effective Wednesday of this week. This will expand our capacity to provide vaccination to more people that are eligible. In terms of scheduling appointments, we look at three different ways of doing so. The first way is receiving referrals related to case identification and assessments completed by public health providers. We also receive referrals from community providers who are aware of contacts to those with confirmed diagnosis of MPX. And finally, we have developed an online pre-registration survey where we also identify individuals that are eligible for the MPX vaccine at this time. Our pre-registration survey is located on the MontgomeryCountyMD.gov website. If you think you meet the criteria I discussed earlier, please go to the website and pre-register. This survey was created to help us determine who in the community is at highest risk and currently meet the criteria. It doesn't guarantee an appointment will be scheduled immediately. However, it will help us ensure that those at highest risk get vaccinated as soon as possible. It will also help us know who else is interested in being protected against MPX with vaccination so that we can plan for how many vaccines we would like to request in the future when they are available. Just want to let you know that we here at the Dennis Avenue Health Center are on the front line. And many of us are taking informational and screening calls as well as providing vaccination or assisting with specimen collection for testing of MPX, including myself. We've received much feedback from our community by phone, email and social media. And we greatly appreciate that, that you're letting us know how we're doing and what your needs are. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Jessica Rosen. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Jessica Rosen. Dr. Rosen is our ID, one of our ID specialists here at the Dennis Avenue Health Center. She's going to tell you a little bit about MPX, how it's spread and about treatment. So Dr. Rosen, I'm going to hand it over to you.
Thank you, Kimberly. Good evening, everyone. I imagine that a lot of our audience has done a lot of their own research. We have a very well-educated population. But I want to talk to, I want to talk to you and I also want to talk to those who may not know as much about monkeypox. So let me start off with where it came from. So it was first discovered in monkeys in labs in 1958. And that's how it got the name monkeypox, but it's actually more common that it's carried by rodents. The first human case was detected in 1970 in Central Africa. And since then, there've been periodic small outbreaks and these have been limited to a few hundred cases in a few African countries. Prior to the current outbreak in 2022, nearly all the cases that occurred outside of Africa were linked to people traveling from endemic countries or from animals that were imported from those areas. However, we started seeing in springtime clusters around the world and the United States leads that at this time. There's been to date about 14,000 cases reported in the US and about 350 in the state of Maryland. So the, this is a DNA virus and that's important. I'll get to that in a second why that's important. So the symptoms are most commonly about a week after an exposure, ranging from about five to 13 days, but can have incubation from three to up to 17 days have been found. The symptoms that are seen are fevers, chills, headaches, muscle aches, swollen lymph nodes, exhaustion. Some of my patients who have had it are just, they, they are unable to get out of bed, just full blown exhaustion. And then the characteristic skin rash that you've probably seen in, in media. Some folks can have one lesion, some can have many lesions. These can be on the face, trunk, extremities, genitals, around the anus. They can often start off flat and then they turn into blisters and then more pimple looking. And they progress over time. Then what we're seeing most recently in the, in the current situation is a lot of proctitis, which is swelling and inflammation around the anus. So there's significant anal pain, often requiring narcotics. And there's, there can be bloody discharge. If, then we've also seen oral lesions that can again be incredibly painful, limiting people's ability to eat and swallow, et cetera. So sometimes people get some of these symptoms depending on where their site of inoculation was. Sometimes they get the rash first and then they get prodromal symptoms first in other instances. So that's the fevers and the malaise exhaustion, et cetera. The illness typically lasts about two to four weeks. So how is it transmitted? Monkeypox can spread to anyone, again, anyone through close personal or skin to skin contact. Though right now it's predominantly affecting the MSM community disproportionately. So the most, by far, the most common route of transmission is direct skin to skin contact. There's debate about whether this is called an STD or not, given the, the current situation where we're seeing a lot of pharyngitis and a lot of proctitis. But the thought is that there are infections that can be transmitted non-sexually and sexually such as herpes and molluscum contagiosum. We definitely see those infections that are spread in both ways. And this is probably a similar way. And if you think about the skin to skin contact, the areas, the, the mouth and the anus are both areas that have, if they're rubbing up against infected skin can have lots of skin breaks. So there's a fast way of transmission there. We don't know, we, we, studies have seen monkeypox within semen, but we don't know if the virus can spread directly through semen or vaginal fluids outside of the illness. Additional ways that the MPX can spread is through contact with materials like clothing and linens that have been used by someone with monkeypox. Also through kissing and face to face contact through saliva or respiratory droplets. It's not thought to be airborne, meaning it, it, when someone coughs, they cough a certain amount of the, the larger droplets go a certain time before they fall down. And I know that we had similar thoughts about coronavirus in the past, that it was not airborne only droplet. But the transmission that we're seeing really points to, to not having a airborne component. Additionally, it can be spread from a pregnant person to the fetus. To date, it has not been shown to spread through casual contact such as a casual conversation and briefly touching shared objects. And it's currently thought that people who don't have symptoms, so either the lesions or the prodrome cannot spread the virus to others. There was a question in the, in the Q and A about can, do we have to worry about it in the, in the public pools? It is not thought to be a waterborne, a waterborne virus. The pools are, are chlorinated and that's really not thought to be a concern whatsoever. I would however worry more about, you don't want to share towels in those areas because those are rubbing up against you and you don't want someone who's rubbed up against the towel to go to someone else, but is not a waterborne illness. So how serious is it? Luckily, this is generally mild and self-limited, though incredibly painful in some patients. And particularly, we worry about those with weakened immune system. We also worry about people who have skin disorders such as eczema because the, the skin lesions can spread more. And then children and pregnant women. Luckily, there have been zero US deaths reported and very, very few deaths outside, in the current outbreak outside of Africa. However, there is a significant impact in terms of loss of work and of the cost of isolation. So people need to isolate from the symptom onset until after their scabs have fallen off. So that can be a long, a long time with loss of wages. The other issues is there can be possible scarring. If someone has a lot of lesions, especially facial lesions, that can be very upsetting to people. And there can be, because they're so visible, there can be so much stigma from it unfortunately. So what does one do if someone thinks they have lesions or other symptoms that they're concerned about? At this time, we are lucky enough that commercial labs have testing readily available. So any provider that in terms of primary care or an urgent care center, emergency room, et cetera, anyone who has, who generally does swabs for viral infections. So if they do swabs for the flu, if they do swabs for herpes, if they do swabs for, for chickenpox, they can do the same swab and send it off to commercial labs, LabCorp, Quest, et cetera. In terms of treatment, luckily, this is usually self-limited, as I mentioned. There is treatment that is available to treat smallpox that has been likely, that has been used to treat monkeypox, though it doesn't have that indication. It is currently only available from the national stockpile, basically created in case there was a bio, bioterrorism event with smallpox. The T-Pox, Teporimat, T-Pox can be ordered by any provider, though there is a significant amount of paperwork that the provider needs to sign off on, including giving their CD. And because it is slightly somewhat experimental, especially for this, for this disease, the, the patient needs to sign informed consent. It is definitely indicated for those with severe disease requiring hospitalization and those at risk for complications due to immune compromise, children, pregnant women, or those with eczema skin, other severe skin conditions. And then we're using it more in people who have had unrelenting pain or difficulty eating or drinking it's or using the bathroom because of severe disease in, in sensitive sites. So as Dr. Bridges and then Kimberly mentioned, we do have a vaccine available. And we, people should be getting it four weeks apart. And as Kimberly mentioned, thank goodness, we are now have the data to support giving five doses per vial, which opens it up to many more people, starting later this week. The initial, with initial such limited supply, it was really intended for people for what's called post-exposure prophylaxis. So people who have been exposed to someone with monkeypox to prevent them from getting monkeypox themselves or preventing them from severe disease from monkeypox. The reason it's the CDC and the state of Maryland decided to give it to people who don't have known a known exposure is that there are many people who have been exposed but don't know it. And so they used situations where it was most likely that someone had a, an exposure. So if someone had had a encounter in, in bathhouses, saunas, multiple sexual partners, et cetera, in the gay bisexual and men who have sex with men community or people who work in those arenas. Those were thought to be the people who were most likely have already had an exposure. And so it's again, post-exposure prophylaxis when we have a limited supply. I'm hoping with all of you that we get more vaccine as soon as possible so that we can protect people ahead of time. Because that's, you know, I work in our STD clinic, I work in our HIV clinic. I want to prevent disease before it happens and with vaccine, we can hopefully reach that much sooner. But as it is with the limited supply, we're giving it to the people who may have already been exposed to prevent them from getting severe infection. So finally, how worried should people be? You know, what's, the good news is unlike COVID, where this was completely new to the world. This has been an infection that's been around for a long time and there are vaccines, though not as available as we'd want, that have activity and there's already the antivirals in existence that seem to be effective. Additionally, unlike COVID, which is an RNA vaccine and mutates very easily, this is a DNA vaccine. So there, we're much less likely to have different strains come about that are resistant to the, the latest vaccination. We're not going to have to play that catch-up game. So we won't have quite that same issue. There's tons of very good information on the CDC webpage and also the Maryland Department of Health webpage for your most up-to-date information and we'll include that in the chat.
All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Rosen and the other panelists. We are going to begin the Q and A portion. I know several folks have already submitted questions in the Q and A feature. We also received some questions prior to this town hall. So we're going to go down that, make sure that you put your questions in the Q and A feature and not in the chat. That's how the questions will get answered. And so I'm going to go through these questions, pull them up. So I know you just spoke back Rosen, but the first question is directed towards you. It says, there's evidence that monkeypox is an STI. Do condoms help stop the spread? How does testing work? Does someone have to have symptoms?
All right. Great questions. And again, as I said, it's a little, it's a controversial isn't quite the right word, but there's a lot of thoughts about whether or not it's an STI. STI can stigmatize the, an infection. So that's part of the reason. Additionally, condoms protect the site that is covered. So for the people who have had, from my experience, from patients who have come in, the most severe symptoms are the people who develop proctitis. So infection of the, of the anus. So the, so if you're protecting a specific area of the body, that might be helpful. So condom use in receptive anal sex will most likely protect against proctitis. It will not protect against skin lesions on other parts of the body. It won't protect against the spread through, through airborne, I'm sorry, through droplets, kissing, et cetera, but it, it would likely help reduce the local site of infection. So pharyngitis, so using condoms for oral sex and again, using condoms for, particularly for receptive anal sex would likely mitigate the, the infection significantly. And what was the other question?
On, the rest of the question was, how does testing work? Does someone have to have symptoms?
So yes, someone needs, there's no testing until there are symptoms. And the, the testing basically involves what looks like a couple of Q-tips. So they can, the, whatever the lesion is and often if they're, they're, it's recommended that you do at least two swabs per lesion to get the best sample possible. And if there are multiple lesions in different parts to get your highest yield, it's recommended to swab those different areas. The swabbing can be uncomfortable for people because you're trying, the providers trying their best to get a good sample so that they, there's a positive result if there's an actual case. And then those are sent off to the, the lab with it in a contained, in a bag, a lap bag. But no, there's no testing beforehand. There is post-exposure prophylaxis with vaccination, but there's no testing.
Thank you, Dr. Rosen. The next question is geared for Kimberly Townsend. It says, how can I, how can I get my uninsured slash low income slash homeless patients treatment for monkeypox?
Well, the first, thank you for the question. The first step would do, would be to have this particular patient screened and evaluated in order to determine if they need to be tested. Once tested, they would, you know, if, if positive, a provider would need to prescribe the medication for treatment and decide if that's appropriate. If, if the person is, doesn't have a primary care provider, they can go to an urgent care centers. Urgent care centers do have the ability to order the testing. If they're still in need of assistance, please give us a call at the Disease Control Program here at the Dennis Avenue Health Center. And that number is 240-777-1755.
Can I add to that just a little bit? Because the T-Pox is held at the national stockpile, there is no cost associated with it. You do need a provider to go through the, and you can, again, this is all on the CDC's website on how to obtain T-Pox. So if you are in, in with a provider who is not knowledgeable about this, you can just tell them to go to the CDC's website and find it. And again, we will put that in the comments in the chat. But as long as the paperwork is done, the patient for signs informed consent, the cost of T, there's no cost to the T-Pox.
Just to add, we've also been in contact with our safety net providers. And so we have information listed on our website, if not our, our CDNE helpline can provide with, provide any calls with support regarding our uninsured population. We did poll our Montgomery Cares Clinic, our Safety Net Clinics to see who was actually testing, who had access, if there were a, such as Mary Center, who was a federally qualified health center, if there are other spaces where, where the Janus vaccine is available. And so we have information about support for those individuals who may be eligible for vaccine and who are uninsured. So we have that information and I encourage you all to reach out to our, our information line for additional referral.
Thank you, Dr. Bridges. The next two questions are for Dr. Rosen. The first one is, how do I isolate with monkeypox?
So hopefully, if someone lives alone, it makes it a lot easier. So hopefully, if someone lives alone, it makes it a lot easier. If someone shares a bathroom or kitchen, then it has to be worked on a little bit more, more carefully to try to isolate and trying to go in into use those facilities while you don't have, while you're by yourself. It's best to try to cover body parts that are, that have lesions and wear a well-fitting mask. Luckily, common disinfectants can be used to, to kill the virus in the, in the, in the in the environment. But the, the thought is to isolate in your, in your own home and only leave if needed for medical necessity. And isolation is supposed to continue until all lesions have crested over. And the scab has fallen off.
Thank you. The next question is, if I get monkeypox between my first dose of the vaccine and second, should I still get the second dose?
Great question. The thought at this time is that having that first dose of vaccine hopefully mitigates the extent of the, of the infection and how bad symptoms are. It is not thought that you need your second vaccine. There's some caveats in severely immunocompromised patients, but for the, the average person, there's no benefit of getting that second vaccine at this point.
Thank you. This next question is for Ms. Townsend. It says, DC has a breakdown of monkeypox cases on their site, a number of people vaccinated. When will we know how many Montgomery County residents have been diagnosed with monkeypox and how many have been vaccinated?
Thank you for the question. I think Dr. Bridges mentioned earlier that we are using, are working on gathering data so that we can provide information on our county's case rate and vaccination on a data dashboard. So hopefully, we'll be able to have that up and running soon. A similar dashboard that you see in the District of Columbia. I can tell you that most of the vaccine that we have received thus far has been allocated for either first or second doses. We do, we do plan to move forward with giving additional first doses as early as this week. And this is because we will have more vaccine available for doses because we are adopting the new federal guideline for the one-fifth dose.
Thank you so much. And Dr. Bridges, this next question is for you. There have been several questions similar to this one. It says, what can be done to increase vaccine equity in Montgomery County and how can we increase our supply?
So great question, Dr. Johnson, and to the resident who provided that question. So we've learned a lot of lessons over the past two and a half years from COVID. And so we've used multiple strategies, looking at zip code analysis, geomapping, access to data points, making the vaccine equitable to all. And so we've used some of those lessons learned, but we also looked and evaluated the challenges that we experienced do, early on in our response to COVID, where we didn't have as many vaccines as we needed in the community. And so we wanted to use a ring theory, if you will, public health theory, where we looked at those who are at risk. And we began to identify those folks who were at the greatest risk. And as vaccines became available, we vaccinated that at-risk group. And then we expanded it as we got more information, as we identify gaps to access. And, and we use that strategy, and we continue to use that strategy to look at those individuals who are at risk. And so we continue to advocate with the Maryland Department of Health, with the, with the state legislature as Council Vice President Glass indicated in his opening remarks, clearly stating that we have a demand and we don't have as many vaccines to handle that demand. And so we internally assess those individuals through our sexual health team and working with Dr. Rosen and Ms. Townsend to look at where those vaccines are needed. We continue to share the data that we have available. Now, keep in mind, the Maryland Department of Health is still managing the data because it's such a smaller set that we want to protect patients' health information. And so as we continue to build out a data dashboard, you will see aggregate data being reported, which allows us to not only get a sense of where those at-risk groups may be in the county, but those spaces where we need to increase not only information, education and awareness, and to have targeted discussions and town halls like we're doing this evening. Lastly, as we continue to get vaccines in, we will look at the best practices that we are afforded and get those vaccines in the community. Dr. Rosen has been very instrumental in helping assess that. She's articulated the strategies for not only testing, but also vaccinating. But going back to early on, when I, when I shared the timelines, we only had one lab, all of our specimens collected, and they were few, collected either as a close contact was sent to the Maryland Department of Health. And then the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention for confirmation, we had to use that data. We've since had other labs to come online. And we continue to use those strategies to not only increase the analysis of our specimens that have been resulted, but also use that data to identify those who are at risk.
Thank you, Dr. Bridges. This next question is for Dr. Crowe. And if Councilmember Glass has something to add, we welcome his response as well. So the question is, almost all of my LGBTQ plus friends live in DC and are already vaccinated. I live within 100 feet of the DC border in Silver Spring and can't get vaccinated. DC has been vaccinating its residents for weeks and continues to do so. Montgomery County LGBTQ plus residents matter just as much as DC residents. And a bunch of us live right next to and work in DC but can't get vaccinated as Montgomery County residents. Do you have a response for that, Dr. Crowe, and then Councilmember Glass?
So I'll start and certainly hopeful Councilmember Glass will chime in and join in. You know, I was looking at the numbers while we were talking, and today the CDC reported that that across all of Maryland, there were 379 cases of monkeypox. And in DC, there were 372 cases of monkeypox. So we've got a very, the same number of cases in a much smaller jurisdiction. And we've got, as, as Councilmember, as Vice President Glass mentioned earlier, that, that DC is treated as a state. And so that their, their access to vaccination, to vaccines is, is greater than ours is, as a, as a, as a county. Maryland is distributing doses across the state to address the 379 cases and, and using some, using a formula or some, some formula. And we are doing the same, and as DC is doing the same across its jurisdictions in the city, across locations in the city. It is, it has got to be insanely frustrating to, to, to live two blocks away from DC and, and struggle with not being able to get a vaccine. It is, it is, and I, and I share the frustration around this, as I'm sure Councilmember Glass does and Dr. Bridges as well. I don't know that there is a way, that maybe there is something that Doctor, that, that Councilmember Glass can, can share with us about whether or not there's an opportunity afoot for us to share doses across the jurisdiction. At this point, it's not, it's not happening that I'm aware of. I do know that we did a little of that with COVID across other, other county jurisdictions. County lines, I should say.
Well, thi- this appears to be deja vu all over again. And we experienced this during COVID, when we saw people in other jurisdictions getting vaccinated at higher rates with more ease than we here in Montgomery County and in Maryland. And it is simply because the district is treated as a city-state where they get their own allotments of vaccinations and that they are easy, easily to distributed amongst a smaller population in a much smaller geographic area. And my husband and I actually lived on Eastern Avenue for about eight years, which is quite literally on the DC line. And all of us have friends who, who live across Eastern and Western Avenue. And we're seeing in social media, people in other jurisdictions getting vaccinations as well. In my opinion, there are two things that we can do. And that is part of what this conversation is about. We need to continue appealing to Governor Hogan to provide us with more vaccines, just like we appeal to him to give us a more equitable distribution of COVID vaccines. That's number one. And number two, I, I am very appreciative that we have representatives from Senator Chris Van Hollen and Congressman Jamie Raskin's office here so that they can provide the support to our federal partners and the White House to speed up distribution. I remember reading in a New York Times article just a few weeks ago that the federal government had the opportunity to purchase or at least acquire hundreds of thousands of doses from overseas and opted not to, which was a big mistake. And so we, we need an all-hands-on-deck strategy at all levels of government to get us the vaccinations, to make sure people are healthy and safe, and to make sure that there is not a divide between Montgomery County and Maryland and the District of Columbia.
Thank you so much, Dr. Crowe and Councilmember Glass. I also just want to reiterate to folks, it was put in the chat, but I just want to say it again, that if you work in the District of Columbia or a student enrolled in a college or university in DC, that you are eligible and you meet the other qualifications, of course, that you are eligible to get the vaccine.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. You just took my comment, so thank you.
No problem.
Dr. Johnson, you're on mute.
Sorry. We, I just want to say, before we get to the next question, that we have about 15 more minutes before we wrap up, and we will not get to all of these questions. I'll give you information about how you can get any other questions that didn't get answered, answered at the end. But the next two questions are actually for me and remarks that, that I will make. I'll, I'll read the first one. It says, in case I were to be sick, where can I go to an LGBT care provider that can help? My doctor is not LGBTQ specialized, and I would not want to experience indifference. So I, you know, the question asked about LGBTQ providers, I don't, I cannot give you any providers who I know definitely are LGBTQ, but I can give you two places where you can find providers that are LGBTQ-affirming. The first would be Dennis Avenue. We have a wonderful representative from Dennis Avenue on with us, representatives. And then the next one would actually be CCI Health Services. Actually, someone who works at CCI is on the LGBTQ Advisory Group that I oversee, and they are definitely open and affirming to LGBTQ folks. CCI Health Services website is cciweb.org. And then you can also visit Dennis Avenue. So those are two places that you can get information. All right, so let me get to the next one. I'm sorry, I lost my questions. Okay, are trans gay men eligible to receive the monkeypox vaccine? The answer is yes, of, of course. As long, you know, they're eligible. I don't know if Ms. Townsend, if Kimberly, if you want to say anything else about this before we move on.
Oh, thank you. Only that, of course, yes, the answer is yes, as long as you meet the eligibility, eligibility criteria. You, anyone is able to receive the vaccine at this time.
Awesome. And stay right there, Kimberly, because the next question is directed towards you. And I just want to say that it's really important that we remember our trans folks in this conversation. It says, of the doses that the county has received, how many have been administered?
So we have administered, I would, I don't have the exact number. As mentioned earlier, we have administered or have scheduled a second dose for about three quarters of the vaccine we have on hand or we have received so far. Luckily, because we are adopting the federal guidelines for the one-fifth dose, this will expand the amount of vaccine that we have. Therefore, we'll be able to give more first doses starting this week on Wednesday. So we are increasing the number of vaccine clinics that we have over the next few weeks so that some of those people that are eligible can get the vaccine.
Thank you. And there's one other question for you. It says, how will the personal information from the pre-registration form that contains very personal sexual health and behavioral information be used in the future?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Sure. They're asking, how will the personal information from the pre-registration form be used in the future? Because it contains personal sexual health and behavioral information.
The information that's collected in the pre-registration form is used for us internally so that we can determine who's at highest, highest risk and who we can get the vaccine to immediately. And it also is used to help us identify where the need is and how much vaccine we may need to secure in the future.
Thank you so much. This next question is for Dr. Bridges. It's, it's a long question, so bear with me, Dr. Bridges, while I read through this question. It says, according to JYNNEOS, the website, Maryland has, was shipped 21,979 doses. However, several cities have been allotted large amounts of doses. New York City, 125, 904,000, LA, over 72,000, Chicago, over 54,000, Houston, over 22,000. Each of those states also were given additional doses. How can we influence our area to get more doses since this DMV as a as a collective have several cases? So I think mainly what they're asking is, can we get more doses as a collective in DC, Maryland and Virginia?
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Johnson, for that question. And thank you to our resident who submitted that question. Let me just back up and just reiterate something. Based on, based on the District of Columbia, and thank you, DC, for vaccinating those residents who don't live in DC but work and have healthcare and who are, who are attached to DC in some other manner, who live outside of DC, but you are allowing them to get vaccinated. And we know that when something happens in one neighborhood, it definitely carries over into another neighborhood. And we, and we truly appreciate extending that access and making it as equitable as you can. So going back to the 21,000 doses, if, if, if I understood correctly, based on what the Maryland Department of Health has said. Our first three tranches of doses equal about 850 doses. With a two-dose regimen, that's about 425 doses that we have to administer to over 2,000 folks who responded to our pre-survey tool. Eight hundred and fifty doses to respond to over 2,000 respondents. Unlike the District of Columbia, who's administered 16,000 doses and who has direct access to a Federal Reserve. And so we continue to demonstrate and request that we can get those doses in the community. Our reach, our recent request was 2,000 doses. We are going to hold those doses. We're going to get as many of those doses out, 2,000 plus. We've worked with our team and we've used a similar strategy during our COVID vaccination strategy. We want to get those doses out so that we can demonstrate that we can administer those doses and then receive additional doses. So please continue to register. If you have questions, it's in the chat box concerning the pre-registration tool, not being able to get a response. We are responding to not only the email, but also calls. If you're still having challenges, please continue to call and we will make sure that you're connected with the, with the, with individuals who with the, with the, with individuals who have an answer or who can get you an answer. We also have bilingual call takers who can respond to requests throughout our entire community. We have a very diverse community. And so in looking at those doses, we will continue to request more to handle the demand. We will continue to administer those doses based on demand. And we won't stop until we get all who are vaccinated, who requested to be vaccinated, vaccinated.
Thank you, Dr. Bridges. The next question is for Councilmember Glass. It's, oh, yeah, I thought I was on mute. I'm sorry. The next question is for Councilmember Glass. This person is asking on behalf of the Free, of Free State Justice, a local organization that serves LGBTQIA+ Marylanders. Has the county attempted to address the homophobic and racist media coverage blaming the spread of African-American and LGBTQIA+ communities?
Well, thank you, Free State Justice, for the question and for everything that, that you all do, that they do on behalf of LGBTQ plus residents in the state of Maryland. One of the predecessors of that organization was Equality Maryland, of which I was a board member of, and so I appreciate the continued advocacy. With regard to the, the homophobia and the stigma that exists out there, that is partially why we're having this, this conversation to level set. Because I can guarantee you, not everybody who is on the Zoom is a member of the LGBTQ plus community. There are a number of people who I personally know who are on here who are curious about monkeypox, who want to know more and want to know what we are doing to ensure the safety of our entire community. And part of the de-stigmatization surrounding this and surrounding other issues in the LGBTQ plus community are having conversations, are stopping somebody and correcting the record. And so I would encourage every single one of you to make comments on social media, to write a letter to the editor when you see an article that is incorrect or unjust. Because as a former journalist myself, sometimes the editors and the reporters themselves need to be educated and be told when they have done something wrong or used an incorrect word. And so while we in government will continue using this platform, I, I ask that all of you use your activism and engagement to also correct injustices when you see them and use the various tools at your disposal.
Thank you, Councilmember Glass. And I just want to reiterate something that you have said and Dr. Bridges has said on this call, because I know that there are media listening, anyone can get monkeypox. I just want to reiterate that. It is disproportionately at this moment, right now, affecting the LGBTQ community, but anyone can get monkeypox. I just want to reiterate that.
May I also add just one thing? Working with Council Vice President Glass and, 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 and the council and, and working with our team and looking at the naming convention, we, we've spent a lot of research, time researching monkeypox and its origin. And we know that it's an endemic state in, in, in West Africa and the naming convention. But we've also looked at the diversity of MPX. We, we started using uppercase M, uppercase P and uppercase X. And we know that when we did some cross-analysis, we saw that it was associated with an assault rifle. So we've looked at literature in The Lancet and other peer-reviewed journals where we see MPX now used as uppercase M, uppercase P and lowercase X. We will continue to look at naming conventions that de-stigmatize the virus, its nomenclature and how it's communicated in the community. So you may see different, different name, naming conventions in some of our work and some of our documents. But a recent article, again, also referenced that until the World Health Organization changes the name of monkeypox, the virus's name to another naming convention, we will continue to see that in the community, but we will continue to use naming conventions that de-stigmatize and cause harm.
So could I, just wanted to just jump into this, into this piece of this and say that, that one of the things that James has talked, Dr. Bridges has talked about our naming conventions and, and Council Vice President Glass has talked about communication and conversations with people. One of the things that, with it, we, we also went through was looking at symptomatology and, and routes of transmission and how to message that and, and put that out there in ways that, that the community understands that it is not just the LGBTQ plus community that is at risk of spreading or capturing and spreading this, 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 this virus, that it is any of us and all of us. And so we talk about the symptomatology and the behaviors and, and ways in which you can, that anyone can contract this disease. We have to also make sure that we are messaging, challenging the messages that are wrong about the community, about the spread of the community and challenging any messages that blame this community for the spread of, of this virus. It, it happens that, as, as we said earlier, that the virus right now has, has spread in certain segments of the LGBTQ plus community, but it is not exclusively that, that is the case. So we have to continue to do things like this, get this message out and ask you all to take the facts and share the facts and correct it along with us, correct misinformation and wrong-headed information when you see it and hear it.
Thank you so much, Dr. Crowell. All right, these next few questions are going to be for Dr. Rosen. The first question is, as a precaution, should we avoid handshakes and fist bumping?
So handshakes can spread all kinds of things. I'm an infectious disease doctor, so I've tried to avoid them for a while now. So the thought is, brief contact is less likely than more prolonged contact, more contact where there's abrasions that could potentially happen, where there's more pressure put. But, you know, fist bump, great, elbow bump, great. Here, it's, there have been no known cases of a simple handshake causing it. Theoretically, it's possible.
Thank you. This next question is, is a good one. I hadn't thought of it. It says, if you were vaccinated for smallpox 60 years ago as a baby, do you have any protection against monkeypox?
So that's a question that, that I've seen addressed before, and we don't know that for sure. There's probably some small level of protection left over. You know, the current, the majority of the community that's at risk now, the majority of people under the age of 50 or 60 have not had any smallpox vaccine if they're, if they're born in this country. But there's probably maybe a tiny degree of protection, but not sufficient to to really help out prevent the disease. I did briefly see a question earlier asking about how long immunity is for after someone's been exposed, after someone's had monkeypox or after someone has had vaccination. And this, again, we don't know that information. Science over time will tell us. But I'm, I, I don't know at this time. Science doesn't know at this time.
Thank you so much. All right, the next question is for Dr. Crowell. Says, I tried to get vaxxed at my Kaiser Permanente, I'm guessing this is KP, HMO, but they had no supply and blamed the government. I completed the form with Montgomery County online and got vaccinated two days later. Will Kaiser Permanente or Aetna get access to supplies for their members?
I think the answer to that is, is eventually they will get supplies. As more supplies become available, more of our provider community will have access to, to, to those supplies. We are all essentially in, in this area in the same boat right now in terms of access to, 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 to the vaccine and pushing, as, as, as you've heard us say, to get more of that, in, more vaccine into the community and into the county. So it's a matter of time and availability of, of the vaccines. And I think changing how the vaccine is dosing, is dosed will help spread the, spread the available supply to further, further feel to more people.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, we have time for one more question. Again, I know there, there have been many questions and we haven't gotten to them all. This last question is for Ms. Townsend. It says, will educational information and vaccine pre-registration links for monkeypox be proactively shared through dating hookup acts like for COVID?
I believe that is something we're planning to do. We have a whole team that is working on getting information out about MPX. And I know that they're really active with social media, so I would say that's a definite yes.
Thank you. All right. So everyone, that brings us to the end. And I just want to say, thank you all for attending today's session. As I said before, this will not be the last session. There will be more sessions about this. We will have information and updates to you all. You all will be able to view the session. It will be on the county's Facebook page. Please can, continue to visit the website for updates. And thank you all very much.